To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hold on.
Commissioner Chapman, Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Mr. Beach.
Here.
Administrator Jones.
I'm here. Request for modifications to the agenda for approval. I don't have any modifications. I see a change resolution on item 4B that's included on our desk. It's the first time I've seen it. We can talk about it at the time, but no change to be made.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second. It's moved in second. No in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment? Is there any member of the public who should make comment on the agenda items? There's time at the end of the meeting. For general comment, this is for agenda items only.
Good morning, Commissioners of Colton, T.O., Box 11, Moncler Bay. On the agenda today, you're receiving a presentation on the Treasurer's Tax and Tempur Report. I'd like to make one comment and then hurry up you as you go through that presentation. This is a pretty detailed report. I understand it, so I think it's a good product for the public to understand. But I would like to draw your attention to two topics in here dealing with the Secure Rule Schools Act and the Title III funding. That, to me, as a member of the public, though, has been a little bit ambiguous how the county applied in the past, and it's, to my understanding, though it might be incorrect, the county has actually returned Title III funding to the federal government in the past, and so I would like that to be an interest item of yours to determine yourself what has the county been doing with Title III funding as Secure Schools Rules Act. I'd also like to draw the comment attention to the Philp funding payment of taxes. The report does show a trend, upward trend, of the county recovering funds at a much greater rate than what we did in the past, and I would like to also add a comment is that an expectation of the county to continue this upward trend of Philp, or do we foresee a future where Philp will become a downsized amount of money that the county can sustain itself off of? Thank you.
Is there anybody else who should make a comment on the agenda items?
Good morning. Good afternoon. I see that you have funding in for replacement of failed equipment in the Health Department for water testing. I'm pleased to see that, and I'll continue to express my concern that we have adequate equipment, and if we don't have significant stability there over the long term, I'd like to have you start looking at replacement, current replacement water. And I think that water's crucial to everybody here in the county, and we need adequate water testing, good reliable water testing. In my form of work there, water was critical during winters, and we had water barriers for drinking, water quality, and reliable testing, and it's very important.
Is there anybody else who should make a comment on the agenda items only? Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers approved in February 1st.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second. It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Questions, presentations, Treasurer's 2016 Tax and Tempur Report. County Treasurer is here.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Selena Clark, County Treasurer, Director of the Division. I'm here to present my third annual tax and tempur report. This report is compiled and prepared by me from the perspective of actual revenue received by the county treasurer. As you know, the job of the county treasurer is to receive in funds, to distribute and disperse those funds according to law, and to keep the funds safe and liquid in the meantime. This report is one attempt at transparency involving my execution of those duties as elected county treasurer. As you can see, there's a lot of information in this report, and we take hours to go through it page by page. Instead of doing that, I will leave you with this report for now, for you to peruse and for measure. As I've indicated in the report, you should feel free to direct any questions or suggestions without direct access to me. In the meantime, it will be distributed in this report together in both the tax and districts, as well as through the Tempur Committee, and make it available online. And that's all I have to say about this report for today. I'm perfectly happy to take my circular consent to answer. In the way, any questions you may have?
Any questions for the treasurer?
I have a couple. I'm wondering, I've noticed there's a tremendous amount of variation year to year in the real estate excise tax revenue, and I'm wondering if you can help me understand where that significant variation, annual variation comes from?
So the real estate excise tax revenue is taxes that sellers pay on sale of county real estate. And so this is a reflection, basically, of how our county real estate market is doing. Now, there's, for instance, there are some cases where you see a large, very large number in certain months. For instance, in June of 2012, there's a very large payment there, and under previous reports, I had changed that real estate tax. I took it out, so now I realize I should have kept it in. But that, for instance, reflected state legislature that year, they turned, I think it's $10 million from a DNR savings account in the counties, according to the formula. So they got a big chunk of money in and then distributed that to the board. And accordingly, that is what that reflects. It was a one-time payment from the state. Okay, the real estate excise tax, I'm talking about DNR here, I'm sorry, due to so many numbers. The real estate excise tax, so I think those numbers right there in June of 2012 reflected a huge sale of timber property from one private property to another. So it was mainly acres, and I actually have that page, you got my last year's one?
Mm-hmm.
You should look in there, it has a real estate excise tax page in it, and it actually talks about some of those sales, and that's, those numbers reflect those sales. But we have some really big tracts of private tinder lands change hands, and when that happens, the county collects real estate excise tax, and so that's where those numbers come from. But you can also see that it's a reflection of how our local economy is doing, how our local real estate is selling, because that's where that money comes from, the sale of the real estate.
Great. And I'm also noticing a positive trend in our investment interest revenue. I'm wondering if you can tell me, are you engaging in different practices?
No, I think that is a reflection of the fact that we, then I took office, the county's, the treasurer's office had been engaged in short-term investments, hoping, this was in 2010, 2010, hoping that the market would keep picking up. It was clear to us in the finance committee that there was not going to be any quick uptick in the investment interest, so we actually have been investing at two years, and we always, whenever we have money available for investments, we send out a request for whatever rate is for public funds deposits to all of the banks that hold time or areas where we can invest. And so we always go with you as the officers, the highest rate of investments. And this reflects, I think one of the reflects is that First Federal has come back as an interested party in public funds investments, and so they have been operating. Our sound community name has been varied with us as a county. They have given us excellent rates, we know nobody else is offering excellent rates, but then the last year, First Federal has stepped back up to the plate and actually offered those rates, and exceeded one's house. So we move money as needed to take advantage of whoever offers us the highest rate.
Great. And do you have anything to add with regard to the public comment question from Ed about Title III funding?
No. When it comes to the revenue, when it comes to the county treasurer, you receive the money, we have very little to do with why we get the money we get. And when it comes to federal money, basically, you know, you can ask, why are we getting this money? But we've learned that basically the best thing is to say thank you very much, and looking forward to getting the same more next year, but when we do. The only invested information about Philp is on the Department of Interior website. There's very little information there. I'm trying to figure out why we get what we do. There's usually a news release, a supplement or another, that tells us what we're going to get. Every year, it is up for whether we're going to get it or not. So I know there's been an uptick, doesn't mean we're going to get it next year or this year, but we have no expectation. Basically, we get what we get.
And do you know if we have returned any Title III funding?
I don't know anything about the Title III, or frankly, the whole federal course funding. I spent actually quite, this is a new page in this year's report that tries to expand it every year with new information, so I spent quite a bit of time on this page and to get a handle of it myself, what has the county been receiving, for what purposes, and try to put it in this format that as far as returning Title III funds, I'm not the person, because I don't know about that. When it comes to money needing the treasurer, that becomes...
Yes. Okay. And then to the other public comment question about payment in lieu of taxes and not recovery rate?
That's the Philp, that's the Philp money, just talking about when it comes to federal Philp money, we get what we get, and we're happy with it when we get it. Whether we will get it this year, next year, that is up to federal politics, and it usually is very much a political item that gets packed onto things. You know, we get, we get press releases, and we know what we might get, but we get what we get, and we say thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'd just like to say thank you for the thorough report on behalf of your office, and I really appreciate it, and I appreciate you coming here today and presenting it to us, and being willing to take any questions that might come. It's very appreciated. I don't think you've been thanked enough in years past for this detailed report, so I just want to take a moment and say thank you very much. I very much appreciate you using it, but in years past, I think you've glossed over, you weren't thanked enough, so thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Commissioner Chappell. Selena, the return that you're getting, we could imagine the latter concept that you have, but what is the revenue that we have in the short-term state account? Anybody else?
Well, state accounts, yeah, I'm not sure what the rate right now is. You know, we keep track of liquidity, we get some return on that, but we really need to keep the supermarch in the liquidity, because, you know, we have to provide funds to all the districts when they need it. So that money in there is there for short-term and liquidity.
So if you get like $100 million, that you manage in these details, 35 of them, does that save your rest, is it not, or are you...
No, this is treasurer's cash. We have a lot of investments made on behalf of districts that are not reflected in this latter. This is the money as treasurer invests that is not specifically invested by the local taxing districts. So there are other investments that are not going on here. This is treasurer's cash investments.
But you don't have the amount of money that's currently in the short-term account?
If you would like an accounting of that, I can certainly put that together. That is, in my opinion, well, it's not in here, no. So I can certainly give you a report on the whole money, but that's, that is not in here. And off the top of my head, I don't know how much is where, so I'm not going to try and get some. So I can certainly come back with that sort of stuff.
And then this is saying that the investment projected interest is about $600,000?
Well, right now...
I just like commensuring on all of those instruments.
Well, that is over two years, because we have a two-year investment ladder. By county financial policy, we can only go up to two years. So that, this is what you see is two years. The top one is what is, so it matures, you see a column mature, so the top half is matures in 2016. The top one here pays monthly, that is why it's listed here. So then the second row lists everything that matures next year, 2017. So that $600,000 figure is for two years, which comes for about $300,000 a year, which is what I, what I projected.
And then this, what I was asking, Selena, I was trying to figure out, you know, like in 2016, you got a little short of $300,000, very interesting problem. Right, that's just in the instruments, not the states?
Right, well, because it is fairly minimal in the state, but also a lot of money we hold in the state belongs to other districts, and they get the interest. So this is the interest at each county. We don't get the interest of investments, so that's why this is included here, because this, this report deals with revenues to, this investment, any strategy anybody, deals with investments both the county and what we get.
I agree with Commissioner Chapman, I appreciate the transparency on this, and I thought it was good if we had the data for 2016 that's invested in just the short-term account. It lets us take a look at the projected interest for the whole year. That's the one piece of data that's on the list.
Yeah, I don't, right, well, it is minimal, like I said, we don't dispose of those attractive things. This is the interest revenue to the county. There's a lot of interest revenue that goes to specific funds that's not reflected in it.
Anything else? Thank you.
I need another reports or presentations, Commissioner Rosales.
No, I had my Collin Transit Orientation Meeting last Friday, and I'm glad I didn't admit the tour of the bus park into this, but...
Commissioner Beach?
I've had a chance to attend the installation of the new members of Collin Bay Lions Club last week, and at 60, I was the youngest person in that company. And it feels good that I can be a part of the group that is committed to doing their service. The other thing I'll share is the Florida Natural Resources Meeting. One of the issues that I very clearly presented and received a very direct response to is with regard to the Morrill Act proposals. And I asked the specific question, there exists a settlement agreement that is in place today, which has a big impact on Collin County. And my question was, does that agreement expire when the next sustainable calculation occurs? And on the record, I was confirmed, yes, it does expire. That's important, because we made about $45 million through the revenue just on our county lands, there's about $15 million in our rearage, but if you detail that, what you're going to find is a lot of the revenue that we did receive is not only did they not cut the trees that they should have cut, that they're authorized, but there were constraints. You can't cut a tree over 50. For every tree that you regeneration harvest, you have to thin. That's a very significant financial impact. By dropping that constraint, we should increase the revenue stream on Western Collin County in the vicinity of at least one-third. That's $15 million.
Nothing from me.
If you had a highlight of your week was a bus park tour, and a highlight of your week was installation of Lions Club, you guys are really living life on the edge. I have to remember my game to compete with you guys, so, yeah.
Apparently, that's life as a county commissioner.
Exactly, yeah, social life of a person.
Something to put forward to.
Contracts and agreements.
Item 2A is agreement with the Washington Teamsters Welfare Trust for medical dental and vision benefits to the non-bargaining unit employees. All this was discussed in work session back on February 1st.
I move to approve the renewal agreement with the Washington Teamsters Welfare Trust.
Second item, any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2B is a past costs incentive decree regarding the Salt Creek Recreation Area. This is total cost $165,485.15. All this was discussed back on work session on February 1st.
Move to approve, comment?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments?
Comment is that I'm glad to see that we're, you see, we did not request this action.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any special thanks to Mark Nichols and his legal team to keep the liability of the county in a bare minimum, and I think they worked lovingly on the call of duty to get this number well under $200,000, when I believe the starting number was many, many times greater than that when they first, when they first were contacted. Do you remember?
He was a little upset under that layer of legislation.
So they, the course of very hard, and Mark Nichols and his staff got that number down under $65,000 as far as county liability, and had his small, small fee. They should be tremendously thanked for their efforts. Do you want to, I think so, I'll, we're going to, next issue.
Item 2D is agreement for funds transferred to the Western Federal Lands Highway Division as a match for project work on East Beach Road. Or 2C, I'm sorry. Agreement for over a Collin try to provide co-occurring disorders treatment services to adults at the Collin Counseling Services, and the maximum amount of $33,500. And again, this was, this was actually dealt with in work session last year, when the committee made their full recommendations, and just this is the contract or the amount of money that the commissioners previously approved.
Move to approve the contract, with over a Collin contract?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, item 2D is the agreement for funds transferred to the Western Federal Highways, Federal Lands Highway Division as a match for project work on East Beach Road, a total amount of $25,380. All this was discussed in work session on February 1st.
Move to approve the funds transfer?
In the second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 2E is an agreement with Robert B. Emerson and Janet N. Emerson for purchase of easement for the Olympic Discovery Trail east of Lynn, total amount of $1,149.39. All this was discussed in work session on February 1st.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, bids and awards.
Item 3A is a notice of invitation for bids to be received no later than 10:00 a.m. March 1st for 2016 hot takes, ask all requirements, as was discussed in work session on February 1st.
Move to approve the qualities?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 3B is a request for proposals/qualifications to be received by the Human Resources Department no later than 4:30 p.m. March 18th for hearing the examiner's services. All this was discussed in work session on January 26th.
Move to approve the request for proposals?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions? Are we still going to incorporate the judicial questionnaire through this process as well?
A questionnaire, not necessarily the judicial questionnaire, but yes, HR and I are going to be working on, and also we want to incorporate the new committee when we, when we bring that RFP back. You approve this one this time, next week we'll bring back the RFP for the Citizens Committee, and we'd like to include them, me, in whittling down the judicial questionnaire.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
It's administration.
Item 4E is a resolution appointing a member to the Board of Health, namely Donald Lawley, appointed as Hospital District Commissioner Representative for terminating December 31st, 2018.
Move to approve, Donald Lawley is a member of the County Board of Health?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4B is a resolution authorizing additional expense in District Court I, and you have a replacement resolution that was handed today, and I'm struggling to see what the difference between the two was. That was my question.
How I am changed to Pro-Tam.
Oh, okay.
The first line.
Oh, okay.
So the question.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Judge Porter is here, if you have any questions.
Motion to approve this motion.
Not true.
Got it. Move to approve?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions or comments?
Do the judges find the reason for the change, please?
Judge Porter, yeah, the reason is pretty simple. The, the work session we had on Monday, with, I think we discussed, we aren't actually asking to hire anybody. I don't want to hire anybody, I don't think it's necessary to hire anybody. We're simply asking for us to be able to address this anomaly. We have had one year where we're doing, where my case load is about 1.6, as opposed to what it should be at 1.0. I think, believe it's just an anomaly for this one year, and so we need to have the ability to have some extra help, just to deal with that, and then we need to look at it. In the years to follow, the next two, three years, we'll look at it again. I'm not asking for any significant or major change, really what we're looking for is a band-aid to get through this high peak time of our case load. So if this is kind of misleading, it kind of makes it sound like we're asking for part-time workers, and we're not. We're typically using, asking to use the resources that we have now. In fact, one of the things, it's kind of a, the Pro-Tam money that gets allocated by you guys, has to be accounted for in very specific line item numbers. One is my vacation time, one is my military time when I served in the Air Force, and one of them is for extra help, for excess caseload. Before we can spend the amount in excess caseload, you as the legislative body have to say, yes, there is an excessive caseload, and yes, you can spend the money. Now, we currently have $10,000 in the budget for that purpose, but we've never asked for the authorization to actually use it. Now, because of the increased caseload, it is important to be used. You have to make that assessment, then say, yes, based upon what the numbers from AOC, which indicate that we're doing 1.6, the work of 1.6. Judges think, yes, there is an excessive caseload, so we can simply use the money that is currently in our budget for that purpose. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I think the difference in the document is, you're clarifying that the use of the funds are for Pro-Tam, not part-time.
Right, we're not looking to hire anybody. We don't need to hire anybody at this point. We have Pro-Tams to work, like when I'm on vacation, or if I have a sick day or something, we have Pro-Tams. We already have people in place, we just need a way of actually utilizing, and this action, we have to be able to document every Pro-Tam dollar, and we do that, and you guys have to authorize the use of excess caseload funds, which is, like I say, it's already in the budget, so we're not asking for any additional funds at this point, and I think, I might want to know, we're going to try very, very hard to keep it under that, the $10,000 that's currently in the budget, and I'm very, I'm increasingly confident that we're going to be able to do that.
I appreciate the clarification. I know you had a discussion on this last night, I missed out.
All right, sorry. Court.
Yes, I'm very comfortable.
Any other questions for the judge?
No.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Appreciate the judge coming here, he's much in his request, and willing to support it, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4C is approval of minutes for the week of January 25th.
Is all abstained for this, as I was...
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes from the week of January 25th.
Page 5.
The Collin 1st. So I'll second that motion?
It's moved in second. Accept minutes. Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4D is approval of minutes for the week of February 1st.
Is this one of the books you came from?
I move to approve the minutes from the week of February 1st.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Budget. Item 5A is approval of budget modifications for the week of January 25th.
Move to approve the budget modifications?
Now, second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 5B is a notice that the following supplemental appropriations will be adopted Item 5B is a notice that the following supplemental appropriations will be adopted by resolution on February 23rd. Under Public Works Equipment Reglement revolving, receipt of funding from the Sheriff's Office to replace patrol car wreck in March 2015, $7,500, and receipt of Sheriff's Office funding to replace the evidence ban in the amount of $10,000. Under Jubilant Services, reimbursement from Washington State Patrol in the amount of $4,919. Under Monitor, unbudgeted funding for the February 2016 election expected $47,000. And unbudgeted funding for the May 2016 election expected $100,000. Those are item 5B supplemental appropriations.
Move to call for hearing on debatable emergencies.
No, no, we're not there. We're just noticing that's the next one. 5B is just appropriate. Resolution will be adopted.
Issuing.
It's issuing the notice that a resolution will be adopted. 5B. No hearing. Sir, motion to call for the notice. Or issuing the notice.
Move to call for the notice.
Or issuing the notice. I think it is issued. Move to second. It's issued the notice for adopting the recommended resolution to be adopted on February 23rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, item I see resolution calling for a hearing to be held at 10:30 a.m. on February 23rd for the following debatable emergencies. Under Public Works Equipment Reglement revolving, a portion of funding to replace the Sheriff's Office patrol car wreck in March 2015 in the amount of $24,500. A portion of the funding to replace the Sheriff's Office evidence ban in the amount of $14,000. Under Monitor, adopted budget assumes 260 workdays. The actual is 262. They're asking for $3,600 in debatable emergency for that amount. Under Health and Human Services, environmental health, repair outdated water lab equipment in the amount of $8,000. Under Sheriff's Office, purchase being able to be used exclusively for the expansion improvement of controlled substances related enforcement activity, amount of $15,000. And under Sheriff's Office, animal control, to pay veterinarian feeding and boating costs for livestock animals seized in a 2015 animal cruelty case in the amount of $5,000.
Now, if you call for the hearing?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
It's moved in second. Call for a public hearing, 10:30 a.m. February 23rd for the debatable emergencies. Any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Community development, no public works, no public carries, public comments. Any member of the public? Appreciate any general comments for the board.
I'm Larry Campbell. I'm 215, both I and I. I'm involved in a Coast Guard challenge issued on 7/15/15. I've been involved with the Cloudon County Commissioners here, getting some direction on that to go to the RSE Vice of Division Seattle, Washington. Anyway, I was blocked by several lawyers and also violated as far as Coast Guard challenges. I should have the title building in section 43, somewhere around Marion Street, right at the open area. And therefore, very much I should say peaceful. My tapes showed it in a peaceful so I ask you guys to review those since you guys sent me in that direction. And therefore, violation of a Coast Guard challenge, you have to refer to me, violate court case there, which is a military justice case. I'm asking since I am under a budget status, or I should say, police protection was allowed on the RCWs, and be able to get back in there and give my court case filed. And therefore, I ask you to review the tapes and send the rest that I may have to deal with. Hopefully deliver that tape in the session. Thank you. I ask everybody to report, record, to report this statement, report it forward here. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make comment?
Commissioner, once again, I'd like to do a box 101. I didn't get to sit in your whole work session yesterday due to a medical bug, but I understand you brought up the topic of videoing, public meetings. And I haven't been able to review the video from yesterday, so I don't know the details. But what I am hearing, I am supportive of, and I am very interested in how you proceed with this. And if we get this put into play, it sounds like a workable thing across the county at large, be able to access the meetings that are held in this room, at least in the ghetto. And maybe down the road, you can see. And I did study that company a little bit, and they have the means to do statistics on participation of doing those. I think that'll be a valuable tool to you to determine whether else you might want to in the future possibly expand this out to. So I applaud that action yesterday, and hopefully this comes to fruition. Thank you.
And the decision will be called for an RFP, I guess, on that process of, we heard you were creating.
Yes. You anticipate bringing in RFP for both the possibility of personal recording, uploading to YouTube, as well as the cost of putting our own system and hiring the outside members to support it. So I intend to bring RFPs with the technical specifications necessary for either of those proposals for the board to see and decide which direction they'd like us to proceed. Maybe next week, but more likely to be back with the holiday. It was more comfortable that that complies with what was discussed.
Yes.
Ultimately, a public hearing on a budget jet sign. Yes. I'm a cad, budget emergency for the new spending for a new program. They're probably calling. Yes. Great. Is there anybody else wishing to make comment?
I guess I'd like to ask the Road Department, Tom's here too. A few years ago, you were giving the bids out for fuel for your vehicles and things. I haven't heard that occur lately. Is that something that's still ongoing, that you bid the fuel? I thought I heard that a few years ago, and it seems like I hear the hot mix bids coming up, but I don't hear fuel bids. So...
Hello, Tom's here.
Yeah.
Actually, we've been purchasing fuel off the state procurement contract. Just one of the... Primarily because, you know, they're really good and they're competitive, and the contract is already in place. And obviously, on a state procurement level, the volumes are so high that the unit prices we get are really quite exceptional. We did bid that quite a few years ago, and, you know, Pettit was involved in competitive at that point. But we haven't bid it at this point simply because, obviously, it involves quite a few man-hours to assemble the bid and to go through the process of reviews and contract to test up through the courts. And obviously, we have prosecutor review the contract for legality. So in an attempt to kind of streamline costs on preparing the bids and then advertising and awarding process, you know, with a good contract in place with the state, we've just been going with that.
So I have a question. I think you purchased at least one new dump truck, and you've got a new chip seal machine. How are those machines working as far as efficiencies on fuel use compared to other older vehicles? Do you see anything significant?
I'll have to sort to Tom on the... Actually, both of them. But the only one that I can imagine that we would have any type of mileage type or fuel use history on at this point would be the dump truck compared to the previous years. One would assume that the new chip spreader with the new technology engines are both cleaner and or fuel efficient. But one season with an increased mileage, et cetera, we don't have a level playing field to... Can't clear apples to apples in this case. You know, another few years, might be interesting to break down a few plots per mile of county road, chip seal, one machine versus the other, and see if there's a... Which we can do relatively easy within our accounting system. So right now, I can only assume that new technology is going to be better than old one.
Good. Thanks. And lastly, could I ask you why there was so much money totaling nearly $150,000? Why did that occur? You know, they're both in 2000. Excuse me, both in 2016? Is that different? The auditor is not here.
No, that's the special election for the President's School District, campus in school district.
And so what's...
They reimburse the county for our expenses, so that's money coming in now.
And at the time of building the budget, we had no idea whether the special elections are going to occur. So the auditor doesn't add that to her budget request. It becomes a supplemental appropriation because it's paid for by whoever asked for it.
So the May 2016 election was the main...
I don't know. You probably should have the auditor. I'm not sure if she was here. She can answer those questions.
Thank you.
Obviously, it's a new election. I think it's May this year, isn't it? I'm not sure what it is, but...
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think it is. I just ask... Okay, anybody else wishing to make general comment? Nothing else?
Hold it. One other thing I was just at the Cloudon County meeting the other night, and they could not... I got it on tape for you. They could not identify what one capital share was working in common. They said they had no idea. So that'll be on my tape recording.
Thanks, Larry. That's Larry Campbell again. Review the calendar, nothing more for the board this week, which will be two or three commissioners together. So Monday being a holiday, we will continue this week to Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m. So work with the great President's Day weekend. So Tuesday morning 9:00, work session.
That, to me, as a member of the public, though, it's been a little bit ambiguous how the county applied in the past. And it's, to my understanding, though, it might be incorrect, the county has actually returned title free funding to the federal government in the past. And so I would like that to be an interesting of yours to determine yourself what has the county been doing with title free funding out of Secure Schools Rules Act. I'd also like to draw the comment attention to the PIL funding payment to the taxes. The report does show a trend, upward trend of the county recovering funds at a much greater rate than what we did in the past. And I would like to also add a comment. Is that an expectation of the county to continue this upward trend of PIL? Or do we foresee a future where PIL will become a downsized amount of money for the county to sustain itself? Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to make comment on agenda items?
Mark. I see that you have funding in for replacement of failed equipment in the Health Department for water testing. Pleased to see that. I'll continue to express my concern that we have adequate equipment, and if we don't have significant stability there over the long term, I'd like to have you start looking at a replacement, current replacement.
Pollers from DNR saving to counties, according to the formula. So we've got a big chunk of money and then distributed that to the... According to... That is what that reflects. It was a one-time payment from the state. Okay, the real estate excise tax. I'm talking about DNR here, I'm sorry. Too many numbers. The real estate excise tax, so I think those numbers right there in June 2012 reflected a huge sale of tinder property from one private company to another. So it was many, many acres. And I actually have that page. You got my last year's one. You should look in there. It has a real estate excise tax page in it, and it actually talks about some of those sales. And that's, those numbers reflect those sales. But we have some really big tracts of private tinder lands changed hands. And when that happens, the county collects real estate excise tax. So that's where those numbers come from. But you can also see that it's a reflection of how local companies doing, or also real estate selling, because that's where that money comes from, the sale of real estate.
Great. And I'm also noticing a positive trend in our investment interest revenue. I'm wondering if you can tell me, are you engaging in different practices?
No, I think that is a reflection of the fact that we've... Then I took office, the count hours to go through it page by page. Instead of doing that, I will leave you with this report for now, for you to peruse and for leisure. As I've indicated in the report, you should feel free to direct any questions or suggestions without directing to me. In the meantime, we'll be distributing this report to the other, both the tax districts, as well as to the Timber Committee and make it available online. And that's all I'm going to have to say about this report for today. I'm perfectly happy to answer, or consent to answer. Any questions you may have?
Any questions for the treasurer?
I have a couple. I'm wondering, I've noticed there's a tremendous amount of variation year to year in the real estate excise tax revenue. And I'm wondering if you can help me understand where that significant variation, annual variation comes from.
So the real estate excise tax revenue is taxes that sellers paid on sale of county real estate. And so this is a reflection, basically, of how our county real estate market is doing. Now, there's, for instance, there are some cases where you see a large, very large number in certain months. For instance, in June of 2012, there's a very large payment there. And in other previous reports, I had a page about real estate tax. I took it out, so now I realize I should have kept it in. But that, for instance, reflected state legislature that year, returned, I think it was $10 million.
And I think that water is crucial to everybody here in the county, and we need to have good water testing, good reliable water testing. In my former work there, water was critical during waters, and we had water that had drinking water quality.
Is there anybody else wishing to make comment on agenda items open? Thank you. Item 1A is approval of vouchers for the week of February 1st. Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's moved in second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Parts and presentations, Treasurers, 2016 Tax and Timber Report.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Selena Clark, Cloudon County Treasurer, Democrat District. I'm here to present my third annual tax and timber report. This report is compiled and prepared by me from the perspective of actual revenue received by the county treasurer. As you know, the job of the county treasurer is to receive in funds, to distribute and disperse those funds according to law, and to keep the funds safe and liquid in the meantime. This report is one attempt at transparency and helping my execution of those duties as elected county treasurer. As you can see, there's a lot of information in this report, and we take our...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Full call.
Chair Chapman?
Mr. Vias?
Here.
Mr. P.
Here.
Administrator Jones?
I'm here. Request for modifications to agenda for approval? I don't have any modifications. I see a change resolution on item 4B is going to float on the floor of our desk. It's the first time I've seen it. We can talk about it at the time. No change to be agenda.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second. It's moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment? Is there any member of the public wishing to make comment on agenda items? There's time at the end of the meeting. For general comment, this is for agenda items open.
For general comment, this is for agenda items only.
Good morning. Commissioners at Box 101, Quail Bay. On the agenda today, you're receiving a presentation on the Treasurer's Tax and Temporal Report. I'd like to make one comment, and then Corey, if you, as you go through that presentation, Mike, this is a pretty detailed report, I understand it, so I think it's a good product for the public to understand, but I would like to draw your attention to two topics in here, dealing with the Secure Rules Schools Act and the Title III fund.